All right, if everybody's ready, we're gonna get started. We'll call the February 22nd, 2024, Coffin County Board of Education work session to order. And if you'll be in education.
Yes, sir. Good Lord, thank you for loving us and blessing us, Lord, and thank you for this board and what they mean to the district and for Dr. Lee's leadership. Lord, just thank you for taking care of us over the last few months with this move and keeping us unified and making the transition well, Lord. I just know the business of our children and our teachers is still at hand and never ends, Lord, and I just thank you for the wisdom of our leaders. Thank you for our building-level leaders and the integrity they show. I ask you to cover our buses and our schools, build a hedge protection around our schools, keep us safe while we conduct a business that you've laid before us, Lord. I just ask that the things that we do and say tonight are pleasing in your sight. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Jow, I think, said he would be here, but he will be late, so he'll probably need to get there. Everybody's got a copy of the agenda? Unless there's any reason to make the amendments, can we get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I mean, we adopt the agendas presented.
Motion. I second your way of thinking. I'll be favored. All right, now, please.
All right. Yes, sir. We have on our agenda first up tonight, the school update from West Green Elementary School. So we've got our principal and assistant principal from West Green here tonight. And ladies, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lee, some board members. We are honored to have the opportunity to brag on our school, West Green Elementary. So I'll just start off, I know you know who I am, but I'm Amy Vonnin, the principal at West Green. This is my first year at West Green, and we are loving it. It's my fifth year as principal and my 25th year in education. And I asked my sidekick, my right and left hand, to come with me tonight, and I'll let her introduce herself.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kawata Moffett. This is my fifth year as an assistant principal, but my first year at West Green Elementary School. This is my 21st year in education. And tonight, we're going to be sharing with you about some of the new adventures that began at West Green Elementary School. We began with our GLISI trip, where Ms. Vonnin and I got to meet our new, some of our new leadership team members, and we got to plan how we would carry out a plan for this year and how we would go about making our school improvement plan effective.
So it was really beneficial for us. We were just blessed that West Green was already signed up to go to GLISI. And so our first opportunity to actually meet some of the staff at West Green, you can see in these pictures. So we were charged with getting together with our GLISI group and developing some norms that would carry us through our GLISI experience. So you can see that we came together at the school, and our norms were to have matched energies all over there, to have clear communication, a positive growth mindset, to learn to be flexible, and just to have trust with each other. So that was a fun challenge they sent out before we went. And then while at GLISI, it was a week-long process, and it was a lot of art, but it was very rewarding, going to a new school for both of us to really be able to dive into the data, but really trust in the leadership team members that went with us to really dig and tell us what had already been going on and what they thought needed to be improved upon. So we came up with our why, problem of practice, and then we had to come up with an aim statement. And so you can see those things there. But in summary, we saw a little inconsistency in the instructional framework teachers were using across grade levels. And so that's where we thought we would get the biggest bang for our buck as leadership team was to create a common instructional framework that was consistent throughout the school. So we took that information back and met with our leadership team at our retreat at the school and put these action steps in to start developing our school improvement plan. And so, you know, basically, we made sure that we created a school-wide schedule that had staggered flex time so that our inclusion and ESOL teachers could push in during times that they could be utilized efficiently and work hands-on with the students.
We created a consistent daily schedule for each teacher at West Green, and this was a part of our instructional framework and make sure that we had good tier-one instruction in place.
So our leadership team, we talked about what are the components of our instructional framework, and so we felt like with anything, we needed to revisit and make sure everybody had the same understanding of what that component looked like. So we provided professional learning on each component of our framework, and then we followed up with walkthroughs to provide support and feedback to the teachers to make sure they had the resources they had, and then we put it together.
We put it together in an instructional handbook. We made sure that that was up to date, and it included all the resources they would need to be able to carry that out, as well as we created a shared drive, a Google Drive, that contained all the essential components of the instructional framework, so they had a one-stop shop for all the things, all the resources that they needed. So with that being said, picture this, West Green Warriors working hard, but one thing that we learned is that we are learning right now is the importance of when we work hard, there is a need to play hard. And so Ms. Vonnin's gonna talk to us a little bit about that.
So you are already familiar with the presentations that our system adopted, the Capturing Kids' Hearts, and West Green has really embraced that this year. It's been a very good tool for our teachers to better understand our students and to have better relationships. The first thing we did with that was when we created the instructional daily schedules, is to make sure we allotted time for teachers to be able to implement Capturing Kids' Hearts. So they have some time set aside during their homeroom, and then once a month, we also have tribe time, 30 minutes, and that's when they can really dive into the Capturing Kids' Hearts resources. So you can advance. So these are just some slides that kind of give some snippets of some things we're doing with Capturing Kids' Hearts. Of course, we do the meet and greet every morning, and you can see from the pictures that the teachers greet our kids at the doors. Ms. Moffett and myself, we walk around, we greet each teacher in the morning, go to each classroom, and so the teachers are also in the doorway, and you can see some of them allow the kids to pick what their greeting is. And then some of the older grades, they just call them by name, give them a smile, fist pump, you know, to get the day started. And then the middle picture, that's me with a kindergarten class, but that was another initiative at the beginning of the year that kindergarten actually asked us to do, and they had read aloud books. Because there were several new support staff, they had a book to go with each role. So we went around, and I read the book about the principal and what the principal's role was and how we were there to support students and teachers.
So the explorer component of Excel, it talks about discovering others' needs and interests. And this is where, on the screen, you see a picture of the different grade levels, and they're participating in all of these activities that are recommended by Capturing Kids' Hearts. And it's, all of them are structured around building relationships with each other and as well as with staff, and these are carried out during our tribe time.
And so we all know that Tell Me Something Good is a part of Capturing Kids' Hearts, and that's something our teachers implement every morning during homeroom. We just had our capturing hearts traction visit yesterday. And so our goal for the rest of this year and carrying into year two is for the teachers to provide more opportunities for students to step up as leaders. So we're just getting our feet wet with this. So I asked Mr. Jason Jackson Wells, he's a fourth grader, if he would let us video him leading Tell Me Something Good for the first time, and he was a trooper and let us video it. So if you'll play that video.
Tell me something good. Good afternoon. Does anyone have anything good to share? Tally.
I'm going skating.
Are you good at skating?
No, it's my first time.
Let's give it up for Tally, is skating.
I got a new TV.
What did you get?
Dad.
Let's give it up for Justin again, the new TV for his tennis.
What are we doing in Philadelphia?
What can we get for a boy that is planning to go into Philadelphia?
So is puppy to my house.
So.
Are you puppy cute?
Let's give it up for our lady again, and so is her puppy that's out.
I have a basketball game.
Where you flying?
Let's give it up for Robert, having a basketball game.
And that looking for you are big names.
So that's just a little example. We're getting our feet wet, and we're trying to build leaders and provide leadership opportunities for our students. And it just kind of shows that Tell Me Something Good, that's what our teachers did with the kids. They wanted to ask follow-up questions and use that time as a connection to learn more about the kids and to teach them how to communicate with each other. So I'm appreciative of Jackson for letting Ms. Vonnin's video. These are just some other ways that we affirm our students and our teachers. In the upper left hand, that's a bulletin board that our fourth and fifth grade teachers have, and it's a place where the students actually put affirmations up for other students. And then we recognize our tribe kids that really demonstrate the word of the month with Capturing Kids' Hearts. Their pictures are up on the bulletin board. We recognize those at honor assemblies. And then we have our Warrior Shot Out board, and that's where we post pictures of our students that have been recognized for good bus behavior when Mr. Bull comes around and does the pictures there. And we also give an opportunity for positive office referrals, and so we post those there, and we also announce those in our morning announcements. So you'll see Class Dojo and Highlight, those are ways that when kids are doing what they're supposed to do and they're following our Word of the Month and our social contracts, they can earn dojo points, and just like our staff would give each other highlights, and they can redeem different, wear jeans past or leave early pass for the highlights that they earn.
Do you can go to the next slide.
So this is an example of a student that is redeeming her positive behavior, Class Dojo points, to take the leadership role to lead our morning announcements. So she actually traded her dojo points to do the morning announcements. And so we cut it very short. She did all of our announcements like a chant, but this is just the last part of the day because we know Capturing Kids' Hearts, we launch. So we, I say this to the kids every morning, that launching them for the day, and then we have the launch at the end of the day. So this is Juliana, and if you'll play that, this is her giving a launch.
Students, if no one has told you today, we love you, you belong here, and you're capable of great things. Remember to be safe, be respectful, and be resourceful, and remember the warrior way. Make smart choices, treat others right, and maximize your potential. Let's have a great day, West Green Warriors.
So I had to put that, you've got to love Juliana, because she actually came in, and most of the time, the kids bring their pass, and they just do the pledge in the moment of silence, and then they kind of give it over to me. She just kept going. She announced the fire drill for tomorrow. She went all the way to the end, and you might hear right then, like, you rock, that girl. So she did a really good job, so I'd like to showcase to students.
Absolutely. And so Juliana is a great example of how we empower, that's our next letter or our next word in the Excel, is to empower our students. And so our teaching becomes their doing. And so Juliana is a prime example of where she has watched Ms. Vonnin lead the school, and she's becoming that leader. She's emulating her. So a big part of Capturing Kids' Hearts is building leaders, and that's what we're about. We use social contracts, and those are some examples there that you see on the, on the screen there. We hold students accountable for expected behaviors, and we're just teaching students what our words of the month really mean, and we demonstrate that, and these are just some examples of that in our slideshow up there. And then lastly, right at the end of the day, just like Juliana launched us into the day, we launch our students out of the day by celebrating. You see us positive, you see us celebrating, you see fist bumps, you see high fives, you see cheers, because we want our kids to know that we can't wait to see them tomorrow.
And so we know that just as important as capturing kids' hearts, we need to capture the adults' hearts in our building. And so we've been very intentional this year, especially having new leadership and a lot of just changes with things coming down, that it's important to recognize and give affirmations to our staff. So each month, we do something for our staff. It may be like the popcorn, we're just popping in to say, we truly appreciate you, or the cupcakes in the fall, just little things like that. When we have special days, like our KBS crew made signs for them, you know, thank you for keeping our school spot. So we just celebrate each other, whether it's going out and having a meal together or a baby shower, different milestones, we feel like that's important. And so this is just a couple of slides of examples. Like we've had a staff party that has nothing to do with instruction, it's just getting together after school, having a good time, and painting some door signs. You can keep going. For our staff Christmas party, our Sunshine community, they're like, we just want to have fun, like, we just want to eat, wear jeans, play some games, and have fun. So you can tell from these pictures, we really had a good time at the Christmas party. So these are just our phenomenal adults. We shared our meal, and then we should have reversed those slides, but we shared our meal, and then we played games, and you see what they ended up looking like afterwards. I'll just stop here.
And we don't just play and have a good time with our staff, but we do so with our kids as well. And so these next few slides are just some examples of us playing and having a good time with the kids. So this is us celebrating ribbon week, and I have to slow down when I say that, because it's a tongue twister. Here is the Grinch Day, where we had hot chocolate PJs and all kinds of snacks and cool things like that. And then we have our 100th Day of School, where we all celebrated all the instructional days that we have done so far, but we all dressed up like we were 100 years old. And so we had lots of fun with that.
So I just wanted to give a shout-out. We have four teachers that have volunteered their time to do the show fire for West Green. And so these students give two performances a year. They gave a performance at Christmas, and then they'll do another one at the end of the year. And our younger kids really look forward to the opportunity to be in third, fourth, and fifth, so they can be part of the show fire. And they're actually practicing one day a week right now to be part of our end-of-the-year program. Let's see, please. And then this is just some snapshots of including our career exploration with our strategic plan and having different people visit the school and classrooms. So you can see the different businesses represented there. And then we had our trunk-or-treat, and this was just a fun day for our parents, our community. We had different businesses, our teachers and students to come together and just have fun. We had over 40 cars decorated, our pre-K through fifth grade dressed up and went line by line and just had a ball. The parents enjoyed it, we had fun, and it was just a good day of celebration with all of our stakeholders. So as you can see, we do work hard, and we do have a big instructional focus, but we are trying to balance that with loving each other and building relationships, not just with our students, but with our coworkers. And so I thought I would launch with a quote from Henry Ford, "Coming together is a beginning, staying together is progress, and working together is success." So we are truly tickled to have the opportunity to lead at West Green. We're warriors strong, and we look forward to what lies ahead. So thank you for letting Ms. Vonnin.
Thank you.
I just, I'm really impressed with what y'all are doing, your leadership team. I'm really excited about the future and what y'all are doing at West Green. That's phenomenal work, and so I know we're gonna see great, great things out of what y'all are doing there. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, let's see, we've got the minutes from our previous meeting. We want to take a moment to review those. If it pleases the board, we'll place those on the consent agenda for the regular monthly Next on the agenda, we have our monthly financial report. We have Ms. Tracy Bradford here to provide any detail to these reports that's needed. You'll see the July 1 through January 31, 24, end of month, fund equity is $33,995,685.74. On the next document, you'll see the comparison report. Keep in mind that we've got a number of positions that are being funded using Esser funds, and that funding will end as we move into the next fiscal year, so it is, it's allowed us to build our fund balance a little bit, but I think we'll see that start to decrease over the next few years. Monthly detailed report. Ms. Bradford, anything for that?
No, sir. You can see that's our year-to-date revenue there, at the $44,357,251.30. And again, this is the peak, January and December were our peak months for our revenue. And then our expenditures there at $39,213,670.82.
All right. And the next document is the ESPOS report. You'll see our earnings for January were strong. I think inflation has a lot to do with that. Everything is higher, so therefore, we are gonna bring in more sales tax, but also the retail outlets we have now, food restaurants that are open. All right. We'll place those on the consent agenda if it pleases the board. The next item up on the agenda is the letters training, and we have Ms. Kim Miller here to tell the board about letters training, and I had a chance to...
We had an audit report there.
Is there an audit report?
Yes, sir.
All right. Oh, yeah. All right. I'm so excited about the letter training. I should give the audit report. The audit report is there for your review, board members. We wanted to put this on the table at a board meeting so you could review this. Of course, you receive an electronic copy from the Department of Audits for your reading pleasure, but I'm really excited to say that this was probably the cleanest audit we've ever had. There was no findings, no material management issues, so just a really clean audit. Kudos to our staff, all of our staff, our finance department who worked really hard on this, our, all of the departments are involved, HR, curriculum instruction assessment, operations, principals, I said we have Mr. Allen, our principal, here. But it really takes everybody to achieve the level of audit success that we've seen as of late, because when they audit, they look at everything. And when I say everything, it's not just finances, it's policy, it's how we're operating the district, HR, and the auditor setup camp here for what, and they're here for three months, and they're digging through. They go through board meetings, they watch the board videos, they look at the board minutes and what the documents are attached, and so it's a thorough audit, and so they go through the principal accounts. So anyways. All right. Are there any questions about the audit report? The letters training, I will say that we had an opportunity to do this because of the Esser funding, really. It enabled us to, the Esser One Title One funding, all right? And so federal funding is what we're using to do this with, this work with, and I'm really excited about it. I was talking with one of the assistant principals this morning about the training that's already started, and so we're real excited. Kim, you want to tell the board about it?
So letters stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. So I've kind of been on the outside for the last two years, but I've been hearing lots of chatter about children who struggle with reading and parents very concerned about what we're doing in our schools. So through this training, for all of our K-2 teachers, and some special ed teachers are included, they will be trained on how to teach reading. It's structured, explicit, systematic approach to literacy and language instruction, and it builds in a sequential manner, from very simple to complex. So it focuses on phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary comprehension, and written language. So if you know anything about the dyslexia law from the state of Georgia, this aligns perfectly with everything that they're saying that we need to do to be better teachers of reading in our school system. So children have changed some over time, but children are still children, and there's other variables out there that have come into play that we didn't have when I was a little girl. But we need to work on our instructional techniques, and this allows our teachers to build their instructional skills and toolkit to be great teachers of reading. And so I'm excited about this. I have a granddaughter who starts pre-K this school, this coming school year, and I'm excited to know that teachers are gonna have this training, and you're gonna be able to impact her as well as all the other students in our school system. So we are implementing this across the system. We have 102 participants who started. It's, it says it's a two-year process, but after really digging in and talking with the person who's helping us organize it and plan it and work through it, they have been nothing but great support. It looks like we're gonna finish it in May of 2025. So it'll actually be, we'll do part of it this year, we'll pick up in the fall, we're not doing anything in the summer. We will have a professional learning, onsite professional learning during pre-planning of FY '25. We'll pick up with the training in August, and we will continue on through May of 2025. Haven't, I'm not gonna say all our K-2 teachers, because you know we have new ones come on board and that kind of thing, but we were very careful in how we placed and who we placed. If we knew that we had teachers who were moving grades or whatnot or retiring, then they didn't start the program. That's where we slid in some special ed inclusion teachers, because they're working with our low students too, and they also need help with reading. So our academic coaches are also being trained so that they can support the teachers on each campus. Our administrators, there's a training specifically for administrators that we'll get to, but right now, this is our first step, our first phase. So the training itself was $118,698, and that... And that includes the, all the training, all the materials. And we will have onsite professional learnings as opposed to online professional learning. Sitting in front of a computer for six hours is a lot to ask anybody. So we'll do three hours in the morning, three hours in the afternoon, have an hour for lunch. So we'll have those during the course of the training. So we're excited, I'm excited about this.
What is the, you said about the dyslexia law requirements? What exactly is it aimed to do as far as identification and treatment of that?
So with dyslexia, they're really saying, you know, we've implemented several components. Some things we already had in place in our school district, but some places, some things we implemented, like hegemony, I don't know if you're even, but that's phonemic awareness. It's just a short period of time where they really work on sounds and they, it's great. I saw it in action as a supervisor for Southridge State College. I was very impressed. We already had Saxon phonics, so we had the phonics piece. We use the differentiated instruction boxes, so we already had that in place. But this teaches teachers, it's not a program for students to get on the computer and do anything. It's about changing the way we teach and working with teachers to better be reading teachers. So we have programs for the kids to do, but that teacher directed explicit instruction, this is what that's going to do. It's going to help the teachers be better teachers of reading and know how to teach phonics, know how to work with fluency, know how to work on vocabulary and comprehension, and then tie all that together with reading, with writing. So it is checked off as far as the state of Georgia to meet one of the requirements for being trained to teach children with dyslexia. We also purchased another program called Lexia Core 5 that aligns directly with this tube. And that is a computer program that our students are using. They do an assessment, an initial screener, then it places them where they need to be based on their level. And then they work through those levels. And it's units, if you will, so they're trying to master the units to become better students, better reading students. So, but it's not, it's not a program where kids are doing a lot of it.
Yeah, I get where you're going with that.
It really is, we're trying to help the teachers professional.
But along those avenues, I mean, we're training the teachers to be able to identify and see, you know, okay.
Yeah, so there's a lot of pieces to that dyslexia law, one of which we do have to do some screening and we've been working through all that. But this is really equipping our teachers with the pedagogy to be able to teach kids how to read. Because quite honestly, if you didn't grow up in a phonetic, a phonetic with phonics, even teaching phonics, even doing a scripted program like Saxon phonics, I did Saxon phonics, I was a kindergarten teacher, grade years. And if you don't understand the sounds, you could be teaching it incorrectly. So this is just going to really help our teachers be better teachers.
Great job, Ms. Miller.
I just want to add one thing, Dr. Lee, so I don't mean to cut you off, but we have three teachers right now at Satilla who are doing letters. They've already started. They're doing it with Risa. And they were a school improvement school and they were able to get three of their teachers unpaid, one first, one second. And those teachers have been nothing but excited about what they've been learning and being able to implement. And the others, quite honestly, I think are a little bit, were a little bit envious that they didn't have that. So now we are being able to afford all our teachers the opportunity to have these skills to be better teachers. So I think it's going to be a win-win for everybody, our teachers and our students.
Kim, did I understand you said that you were teaching the teachers how to teach comprehension?
Yes, ma'am. That is part of this program.
Okay.
You know, comprehension is a struggle for lots of kids. They can call words that they-
It seemed to have been in the day when it was a struggle for the teachers too. Because I went to one because I knew my child was having a problem with comprehension. And she said, "I don't know how to teach comprehension."
Well, this is, this is, this is really about working on our instructional techniques.
Right, okay.
Is what this is about.
I was going to add, several months ago, probably six months ago, as we were devising these plans, you may have heard of the Mississippi miracle? They're talking about it nationwide with the way Mississippi raised reading achievement. Because traditionally, Mississippi has been, had some of the lowest reading achievement in the country. And all of a sudden, it has just shot up within a short period of time. So I had made a contact with Hattiesburg Public Schools about 24 years ago. And I knew that they had adopted a certain approach there in Hattiesburg back then. So I was curious if they were still using that approach, what had happened? So I called the superintendent of Hattiesburg about six months ago. And I asked him if they were still using, of course, he wasn't the same superintendent that was there 24 years ago, but he was working at the district then. And I asked him if they still had that, that approach, if they were using that system. And he said, "Well, no, we're not using that system." You know, but you still see pieces of it around and such as that. And I said, "You know, Mississippi is in the news for achievement and raising reading achievement. What do you attribute it to? What is the, what has made the difference in Mississippi?" And he said that they required every kindergarten, first and second grade teacher in the state of Mississippi to go through letters training. And he thought that was what made the big difference in Mississippi. So we're not just doing it because Mississippi did that, required it of all of their K-1, 2 teachers. But I think there's a strong body of evidence that this will have a positive impact on our, on our students here at Coffey County. So I just thought I would add that. All right. We will ask the board to approve this and place it on the consent agenda. All right, Coffey High School media furniture. We have Mr. Van Allen here. Mr. Allen, the floor is yours.
Yeah. I'd like to come to you tonight and ask you to approve the purchase of new media center furniture for Coffey High School. What we have at Media Center now is 29 years old, I believe, and it has served us well. It's good, has been good furniture, but its usefulness has come to the end of life. And so it's time to bring the media center for Coffey High School into the next 30 years. And so you see the items there and the amounts there. So we'd like to ask you to approve that. It'll be paid for with a L4G grant money. They will be using to purchase that if you so approve.
Any questions about the furniture for the media center? I know that your previous media specialist who retired a couple of years ago, she had called me somewhere and asked me a couple of years ago, she said, "If you ever go over to Ware County High School, go look at their media center. We want to get new furniture like they've got." And so I did go to Ware County High School at some point. I did look at the furniture and I came back and told her I looked at it. It looks nice, but right now, you know, we just couldn't do it at that time.
It's been something that we've been doing for quite some time, and this grant has now allowed us to ask you to purchase that.
From having said wooden chairs during the luncheon, Academy tour.
Yes.
I can tell you that money won't spend. Because you don't want workers coming home.
You don't, you don't get home.
All right. Well, if it places, the board will place this on the consent agenda for the regular Policies, we've got policy DIB. This deals with financials and accounting practices. Ms. Bradford, do you want to describe this policy review report?
Yes, sir. During our audit, our auditors advised us, there's just one change. They reviewed our policy and they asked us on the capital, capitalization threshold for the amount of our Sabitas, which is our software, that's our subscriptions that we do, that we reduce that threshold from 150,000 to 100,000. So we're just asking the board to allow us to do that. So we'll be in compliance then. That's the only change is we're just reducing that threshold. And this is basic for online subscriptions is what this is.
And this will sit on the floorboard table for the next 30 days and then we'll ask for approval at the next, next meeting. All right. School calendar. Ms. Miller, you popular or not?
Yes. So the last, at last month's meeting, we shared with you all three drafts. After that meeting, I sent those three drafts to our, to all users, reminded them multiple times, gave them quite a while to have input. And you can see there were 524 responses based on the form, a few that I, that were emailed to me, maybe five that said they couldn't access the form for whatever reason. But 58.8% chose draft C. So tonight you have draft C in a color-coded version, as we always have done for years and long years. And then the special days typed out. And that's the, our staff have voted or had input and that's, this is what they, the majority have chosen.
Any questions? Board members about the policy? Good thing is there's 180 days of instruction.
Yes.
So 190 days for teachers.
That's correct. There's 90 days in each semester, there's 180 day, 180 student days, and 190 teacher days. Yes. And we've checked it and rechecked it, so we're, we think we're, after several eyes and looked at it, we think it's, we won't have to do anything if it's approved to us.
All right. Board members, any questions? No opposition, we'll place this on the consent agenda for regular meeting. Retreat date, I put this on the agenda just to make sure everybody's on the same page with the retreat date. We've got Bill Sampson lined up to provide training and you'll receive six hours of training on March 22nd.
That's on Friday?
Yes, sir.
I guess so.
All right. We will 8:30 to 3. 8:30 to 3?
The media will start at 8:30.
Yes, sir. Thought that would give time for the schools to get up and going if we have any folks from school level that need to be there or whatnot.
Okay, quick, where's it at?
We will be, at this point, we'll be at the Ashley Slater House. Unless we, as, you know, this is really our first, like, two days there. And so we'll see how it's operating. If it seems that it might be better in another location, we may choose another location. So before the meeting day, we'll certainly publish publicly where it'll be, but for right now, that's what I'm saying. We'll see how it's operating there. All right. GSBA delegate and alternate. Currently serving as the GSBA delegate for Coffey County is Mr. Gene Wade. The alternate is Mr. Jesse Towers. Y'all want to change that?
Yeah.
I don't even remember that.
Are you not going to be, you not be there?
You're getting married.
So Mr. Wade will not be there.
But Denise Ray didn't marry.
I'm about to say you would get married.
Why don't you, Mr. Towers?
He don't.
He don't too. Why, you not be able to do it?
I don't think I can do it, serving as a board or director.
Johnson can do it.
That's one thing that leaves me and you, Ms. Lea.
What date is that?
Oh, yeah, things up there.
Be at the G- conference.
The G- conference, and it's the Friday, is it the weekend?
Anyway, how come?
Just put Ms. Lea down there.
And then we might have to change it, Carl.
Well, I'll be back.
It's on Thursday or Friday.
Okay. Adam, absent on backup.
Best be there.
All right. I'm right now, Leola Johnson, delegate, and Adam Law, the alternate. All right, that's our business for tonight, and we'll resume our regular meeting after this one. And so we are going to move to an executive session. I would ask the board that we move to executive session to discuss personnel and the employment of personnel or disciplinary action or evaluation of personnel and also real estate.
Got a motion. Motion for session. Mr. Wade, Mr. Towers, all in favor?
All right. Thank you.
Get a motion next to executive session.
I move, we move, I move as executive session.
Motion for session. Wade, all in favor?
All right, now the executive session and the board's session is adjourned.